Good evening. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetza?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Martins? Mayor Carruth.
Here. Anna, salute to the flag, please.
(Inaudible) America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up for public input time this evening. And we do not have any recognition awards this evening either. So we'll head right into the superintendent's report.
Sure. There's two things I'd like to draw everyone's attention to. Is the opening of school. We've started a school. We had a great start to the school year. We want to thank all of our principals and teachers and parents and school support personnel for a very smooth opening. As of today, right now, we have enrolled 10,322 students. Of those, there are about 70 that have had some excessive absences that we're looking at. Are those students going to be coming back into the system? Or have they moved on to a different school? We'll work that out. But last year, in October, we had 10,125 students. So growth in student enrollment is always a good thing for our bottom-line foundation budget, but also how do we balance that with class size? And since we've been able to add more capacity, we've been able to work on that. We have a bump of, or a bubble moving through the system of heightened student enrollment in the sixth grade. But we're going to be addressing that where the, if there are any class size issues, and we'll continue to move forward. I will also say that as we started the school year, we were very happy that this is the first year that we are part of the community eligibility program for breakfast and lunch. So when we look at the start of the school year, comparing last year to this year, from before Labor Day up through Labor Day, so that's days three, four, five, and six of the school year, well, we've increased service of 942 more breakfasts served and 1,042 more lunches served this year than last year. And what that really means for us, because of the reimbursements rates that we're, we're actually tracking, $15,000 more revenue by being able to serve over 7,000 lunches and 6,000 breakfasts during that time. We're also now running the breakfast after the bell in all elementary and middle schools, and Durfee will be rolling that option out. They have a different model doing it at the high school. But we're very excited about really making sure that all of our students are fed and engaged in outstanding instruction. Final thing I have to say tonight is that the, we've begun putting the steel up at the Fieldhouse foyer. The building is essentially, the new design is divided into about eight segments or quadrants, and we have the steel up already in two of the eight quadrants. So as the steelwork continues, the foundation floors for each of the levels of the school is also being poured now. The plumbing is continued. Those of you who have seen the amazing clock tower installation that we pulled off two weeks ago, outstanding progress being made on the new Durfee High School. It really is an epic project concurrent with also the great work we're doing at Tanzi and Watson and other schools. So it's exciting. We're back in school. We didn't have the same heat we had last year. Kids are excited, they're fired up, the teachers are fired up. And it's going to be a great year. You with me? I see a lot of heads nodding. Yeah, I'm with you too. So we're going to have a great school year, and that ends my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the student delegate report. Do you have any reports from the student delegates? Welcome back.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. So I wanted to update, ooh, it's kind of loud, everybody on a recent project of mine. I actually started it in July. It's one that I'm probably the most proudest of, and it's, I'm really passionate about it. So it's called Hidden Trauma in the River. It highlights youth stories of trauma living in an urban city. Living in an urban city, I know that youth in cities like ours, they go through a lot that they shouldn't go through. Thanks, Mr. Corey. So I created the website to kind of inform the public, but also empower the youth and remind us that we go through things and we aren't alone when you go through them. So I would really appreciate it if everybody, you know, just gave us a follow on Facebook, Instagram. We also have a website. These are all youth living in Fall River. So a lot of them are Durfee students, are PS students. But I also have students who dropped out, and I also have students who go to Youth Build now. It's just, I love it. I put so much work into it, and I just, I think it needs the attention that it deserves, especially from faculty members and school community members, and the public too. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a new student delegate. Do you want to introduce yourself to everyone?
Hello, my name is Dorothy Barros. I'm this year's student body president at Durfee High School. I'm actually here just to basically give an up-to-date review on what student government will be doing for this upcoming year. We started off in the summer, actually, at the very end of June with these student body officers, and we've created four pillars essentially that student government will stand on for the year, and all of them intend with the purpose of connecting Durfee not only to the students that it has in the building, but as well as to the other schools. We tried to do this last year, but we weren't able to follow through. But this year, we plan on connecting a lot more with other schools through events that are district-wide, and plan on raising awareness on multiple events, including bullying, as well as, as I have mentioned, on trauma as well in Fall River. And we've already started to do a lot of events that we hope will reach out to a lot of communities in Fall River, as well as to the Durfee students. That is all. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes. We have a number of travel requests for our approval. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes. And superintendent, can you please read the donations?
Sure. Tonight, we have three donations from the Greater Fall River Development Corp. The first one's to Durfee High School for $14,758.70. The second one from the Greater Fall River Development Corp. is to Doran Community School for $12,000. And the third is to Tanzi Elementary School, also for $12,000. All three to support technology in our public schools. We also have, from Donors Choose to Sylvia Elementary School, $700. From Donors Choose to Fonseca Elementary School, $418.54. From Donors Choose to Durfee High School, $299. From Donors Choose to Durfee High School, $123.29. And finally, from Donors Choose to Fonseca Elementary School, for the classic news for grade four and grade five, we're very thankful of the philanthropic support of the Fall River Development Corporation and the folks that reached out on Donors Choose. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Mr. Aguirre?
So I may just ask for a request. I know we see this a lot, that the, I believe it's the Greater Development, Fall River Development Corp. donates a lot of money to the schools. Could superintendent provide us with maybe a listing of all of this over the last year or so? I'm just curious, as we see these in each meeting, how that fits into our overall plan for technology and the like. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a number of contracts for our approval. Does anyone want any separated contracts? Or can we take them as a group? Okay, we'll take them as a group. Is there a motion to approve all contracts this evening?
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Question?
Question? Mr. Aguirre?
So on the, when I was reviewing the 21st century grants, and I'm not sure if I'm just missing something, but we have various schools...
Mr. Aguirre, we're on contracts, not grants yet.
Oh, sorry, my bad. On the grants, I'll be happy to talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a motion seconded. Roll call, please, for approval of all contracts.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes. Mr. Aguirre, you have the floor on grants. Your question?
So, sorry about that mix-up.
That's okay.
On the 21st century grants, we have 550,000. I'm assuming these are all totals for the year, each year?
Yes.
So my question is on, the ones at Durfee, the first one is 551,000, but there's a line item, number 2100, for a secretary and bookkeeper. It says zero. And when I look at the other schools, it's zero. But then when we look at the Henry Lord, which is actually a smaller amount, I'm thinking that overall, a smaller amount, there's actually money that goes towards us, bookkeeper? And I'm wondering why that's not consistent amongst all of the grants.
I'm going to bring forward Dr. Ryan to answer your questions.
Yeah, for the other grants, we don't take out money for the bookkeeper, but for the Henry Lord grant, that was a discussion, and that was to pay for a stipend for a person to manage the data.
So who manages the data in the other ones for the three times as much of the money?
The other grants are all split between different sites. So that's something that Henry Lord wanted at their site.
And that's money that obviously can't go to any other, if you have that 7,200 there, you can't put it towards something else?
No.
And is there other administrative support there that's...
No. Well, there'll be a site coordinator at Henry Lord, but that will be paid out of the stipend line.
And who does that go to?
Whoever the site coordinator will be.
Is that a teacher, or is that a administrator?
It's a teacher at Henry Lord.
Are administrators eligible for that?
For, to be a site coordinator? I'm not sure. I don't think we've ever had an administrator apply for a site coordinator position.
It just strikes me, it strikes me as, all the other lines right under it says stipends, 30,000, 31,000, 32,000, and this one, 7,200 for a secretary bookkeeper. To me, it just doesn't, it doesn't line up. Are you telling me that the principal's okay with that, and she was part of this discussion?
Well, yeah, we've met to discuss the grant, yeah.
That particular piece?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, with that, I yield.
Other questions on grants? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve all grants?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve all grants, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes. First item for discussion this evening is a presentation about attendance awareness month, and we have a proclamation that we presented down below.
My name is Cynthia Kudo, Director of the Parent and Community Engagement Center for the Fall River Schools. I, along with Christian McCluskey, City of Fall River Youth Services Coordinator, and Marsha Picard, from Partners for a Healthier Community, co-chair the Mayor and Superintendent's Attendance Task Force. This task force is made up of dozens of community partners who have been working for several years to address the critical issue of chronic absenteeism within our community, to support our schools and our families. We would like to start by thanking the 50-plus agencies, groups, organizations, and businesses of over 300 individual people who participated in our first day of school's High Five event across the city. This incredible turnout of community supporters made this event another great success for the fourth year in a row. We'd also like to thank the local news media that covered our event, helping us kick off a year-long campaign to raise awareness that attendance matters, and it's crucially important all students attend school every day and on time. The annual High Five event serves as an impactful visual for students, school staff, and families, demonstrating that the entire city is behind their attendance efforts every step of the way. We all know that improving school attendance requires the work of far more than just school staff. It takes a village. September is Attendance Awareness Month, and as we have done for the past several years, we would like to begin the school year with a proclamation signed by the Mayor and Superintendent of Schools, outlining the commitment we share as villagers to improve student attendance and the future prospects of all Fall River schools. Within that, it takes a village concept in mind. We are very pleased to present to you a few members of our village, who will share in the reading of the annual Attendance Awareness Proclamation. We have a student, a parent, the Executive Director of United Way, a community coalition Portuguese staff member, and a Latino outreach worker, all of whom, along with our attendance officers, who are here tonight. Our principals, teachers, our support staff members, our Rock Street administrators, and scores of community partners know the importance of good attendance and are doing everything they can to continually support our students so that they may succeed in life and in school. As the proclamation is being read, please consider what each of you can do to help ensure all our students are in school every day on time. Whether you are a family adult, an elected official, a member of our business, faith, health, or community safety, community, we all need to play a part, as it does indeed take a village.
Good attendance is essential to student achievement, and good attendance is a proven predictor of academic success and high school completion and...
Good attendance increases reading proficiency, leads to cross-completion, and eventually graduation, strengthening our community as well as our local community and...
Considerando que uma boa participação na escola ajuda a reduzir a diferença que separa os alunos que atendem a escola regularmente daqueles que não atende. E considerado que todos os alunos, mesmo aqueles que atendem a escola regularmente, são afetados pelo absentismo crônico. Professores têm que gastar muito tempo ensinando lições novamente àquelas que não tiveram lição. E...
Considerando que todos os estudantes melhorando a assistência e reduzindo o absentismo crônico requerem compromisso, colaboração, e enfoques personalizados para desafios e fortalezas particulares em nossa comunidade. E considerando que o pessoal escolar e sócios de la comunidad se comunican con los estudiantes crónicamente ausentes para determinar por qué faltan a la escuela y qué los ayudaría a sustir regularmente y...
Whereas school staff and district administrators will track, calculate, and share data on chronically absent students so we can deliver the right interventions collectively, and whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when school staff, family adults, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep students from getting to school.
Therefore, be it resolved that I, Jezel Carrer II, as the Mayor of the City of Fall River, along with the Superintendent of Schools, Matthew H. Malone, Ph.D., hereby proclaim that we stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month. And as such, we hereby commit to focus intensely on improving our attendance rate in order to give all of our students an equal opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally, because attendance matters for every student, every day. Issued this day, the 9th of September, 2019, signed by me, the Mayor of the City of Fall River, Jezel Carrer, and the Superintendent of Schools. Excellent. Okay, next is item number two, is a presentation by the Morton Project Lead the Way, and that is going to be presented by the superintendent and a couple other people as well, I believe.
So I wanted to start the year this year with celebrating something that happened at the end of last year, and it's recognizing both the real innovative grit of our educators, plus the real strength of student project-based learning. And that is that Morton participated in a contest last year, a design, kind of a maker's concept, to design something to be very helpful to other people. I'm going to turn the floor over to Principal Cheryl Patterson to explain more, but this is an award-winning project that our own Fall River students at Morton achieved last year, and I wanted to bring some light and flash some light on really successful stuff that's happening across, not just Morton, but really across all of our schools. And although we're celebrating Morton with this, we're really celebrating the Fall River Public Schools because we are one team together. So, Ms. Patterson, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for providing us with the time to highlight some of the work that we've been doing through Project Lead the Way. Mr. Wiseman is our lead project, Project Lead the Way teacher, and he is going to start with a presentation that opens up with the award that was presented to us for the project that was designed for Boston Children's Hospital.
Okay, good evening, and thank you again, School Committee, for awarding me the opportunity to share with the public on the great success that we've had at Morton Middle School this actual past school year. And I'm going to just briefly go through what we offered our school and the actual event itself. I'm going to start with just a brief video that outlines the great competition we attended on June 4th, 2019.
I am here to judge the MassSTEMHub Project Lead the Way Middle School Showcase.
This year is the second year, working with the middle schoolers, creating a project for children with cerebral palsy. And the learning process helps them understand how can they morph into something that's accessible to a child with cerebral palsy.
I saw one, which was awesome, for fine motor control. I saw like a big board game, which helps with gross motor control too.
They get to meet real-world professionals and get feedback on the work that they've done. I want them to see that they can have a real-world impact, and I think that it's much more engaging that way.
The ability to take what you learn and apply it directly to solve a problem on behalf of somebody else, I mean, there simply isn't any greater sense of accomplishment than that.
I was pushing the kids to see how technology, or AI, or some kind of innovation advanced into their own prototype design that they have.
They gave us a few good pieces of feedback, inspired us to actually keep going with our project.
By the time you get to college, you've already decided whether or not you're going to engage with STEM. The students at this age are really just kind of learning about what STEM can do for them in a professional context, and it's really exciting to be able to get them excited at this age.
My Project Lead the Way class, you're learning how to build, you're reading, you're doing math, it's all coming into play.
So to outline a little bit of what we just witnessed is, this is a big competition that's hosted by the state, presented by MassSTEMHub at the Merck Laboratories at Boston Children's Hospital. Over 100 students gather with over 14 to 16 different schools, compete with their different prototypes brought on by Project Lead the Way. And this year, two of our students were awarded by the Governor of Massachusetts, the Design Showcase winner, which our design will be formally designed with conjunction with our students to be printed and made for Boston Children's Hospital. This is going to help for children with cerebral palsy, and this was their big focus for this past school year. So Project Lead the Way itself is an amazing program. Just to give a little bit of background, it's an activity, project-based curriculum. It's not just, here's an assignment, it's real, this is our problem, you're going to take on the role of an engineer. This is a real-world problem, it's not something superficial, and students dive into it, and then they learn the design process and continuously redesign as they move up. It has all the 21st century skills necessary for our schools and our students. It gives them the ability to problem-solve and present. It's highly engaging, the kids love it, they're always excited, it's like the highlight of their school day. A lot of students come running in, and they're like, so when are we doing this? When are we moving on? Like, hold on, we got to work our way through things. It's an award-winning program. The federal government recognizes Project Lead the Way as an award-winning STEM program. And our school, and along with Fall Rivers, partnered up with MassSTEMHub, which helps host and present and provide professional development for staff. So at Morton, we offer several different Project Lead the Way programs, and we have integrated it throughout from sixth grade to eighth grade, and it continues on to high school, right to Durfee, where they can continuously grow. So we start off with design modeling, robotics, green architecture, medical detectives, computer science, and starting this year, we have Flight and Space, which is going to be put into our grade six curriculum, so students will learn with standard science curriculum So I'm just going to give a brief overview of what each of the programs are. So design modeling was the first Project Lead the Way integrated in the middle schools, and this was going back about seven years ago. Whereas Durfee High School was running their Project Lead the Way, it was now backwards-flowing down to the middle school. It's a gateway program, so students learn how to design in 3D, and we can actually print in 3D. They learn the basics of what it means to be an engineer. This leads directly to all the Durfee High School programs, and this is the foundational gateway course that will support our STEM education in Fall River. And again, over the past two years, this is a special competition at Boston Children's Hospital, where we come up with new ideas. And these are just some photos of what the classroom looks like on a more day-to-day basis. It's not the traditional-looking classroom, students are building, they're designing, they're working together. Our second gateway course that helps overall with students is automation robotics, where we design working robots. They learn the design process from the first course, and then they expand on their ideas to problem-solve now with more real-world applications. And this past year, it was hosted, a competition was hosted at the Peabody Essex Museum, where students had to create a working toy for children in museum centerpiece. And these are just a few of our students receiving awards at that as well, where we designed a working pull toy, where it was helping educate children. The theme was just a toy, and our students just ran with it in every which way. They learned how to program, they learned how to build, they learned how to present. One of our seventh-grade classes that we offer is green architecture, where we're actually applying now problem-solving from every other course to actually creating working construction, to have, create affordable housing that's safe out of shipping containers. How do you create something that's a livable space out of something that's unlivable? And they really have to work on collaboratively, figuring out, okay, well, we have so much space, so much area, how are we going to do this together? So they're taking in all their math skills now, they're bringing in reading and writing, and they're pulling everything together. In eighth grade, we offer medical detectives, which is a really cool program, wish I had this when I was in middle school, because now you're taking on the role of a forensic doctor, and you're actually problem-solving through the medical side. So we look at brain dissections, we're understanding how the human anatomy works together, which feeds right to Durfee High School's biomedical Project Lead the Ways. This is all about really now looking at the science side of STEM, as opposed to the technology and engineering sides. and engineering sides. It's really amazing to come see, and it's, a lot of the problems are, okay, here's a patient, here's their diagnoses, what are we gonna come up with, how are we gonna solve it? And they have to take on all new roles. We have a computer science, which is app makers, where students actually design different equipment using their problem-solving skills now, and apply it to a wearable plan or some kind of plan that will help with our world. And again, Morton showcases last year, where several of our students designed a special device that'll help people keep track of their cats. So if a cat goes missing, how are we gonna find it? As I showcased over here, where they actually came up with a program, they had a program, they had to build, design it, and have it work. And again, here's our newest program is Flight and Space. They're gonna learn how to design aircraft now. We're taking in math programs like ratios and proportions and figuring out jet fuel. They have to figure out propellants to make things fly. And this is all building up right in the curriculum. This is happening in our classrooms in Fall River. This is happening each and every single day, not just, oh, well, here's one, no, this is all the time. This is where, you know, funding and everything comes in, because this is what really helps supply our kids with real application, something that's gonna be tangible to them, they see something build up, they're becoming problem solvers. And again, the Governor of Massachusetts now recognizes Fall River as a successful with STEM education. It's not the first time, it's a consistent basis each and every day, each and every year now. This is why we wanted to just kind of share out a little bit of what Project Lead the Way means. And I'm gonna end with just a quote from a graduate of Durfee High School last school But this changed her life, and I still keep in touch with her, and she is at the University of South Carolina as a robotics engineer. And it all stemmed from Morton Middle School, when she first walked through those doors so many years ago. School Committee, have any questions or anything?
That was great, excellent. Mr. Corey.
Mr. Wiseman, I'd like to congratulate you and commend you. You're an example of an educator in Fall River that's been with our school department for many years, as we continue to search on how to retain teachers. This is a great example of teacher retention, and it's also a great example of high student attendance rates. So the first two presentations today are married in this, in this overall presentation. The kids that are achieving, they're coming into school every day. I'll take a moment to tell all the parents, all throughout our city, how important it is to get your kids to school every single day. So the work of the Attendance Task Force is huge. Thank you for all of that. And the work on behalf of STEM education. I also saw Joey Michael in there from Cuss Middle School, and I had an opportunity to visit his classroom last springtime with the superintendent, Mr. Coogan. And the classroom was alive, and it was on fire with ideas, and the kids, just as you described, Mr. Wiseman, the kids were so excited to present their topics. So thank you for all of that, and thank you for staying with the Fall River Schools all of these years, and thank you for raising the bar. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Coogan.
Eric, does this program embedded in the day, or is this the after-school program with 21st Century?
It's programmed right into our school day. So throughout the day, because we're an ELT school, it's actually able to, by scheduling, allow students, and it's open to all of our students, to attend at least one of these Project Lead the Ways.
Okay. Is this, is this considered science credit, or math, or both, or what?
This would be considered actually in addition to science, so students still have their standard math, ELA, social studies, and science, but this is in addition to their science as well, to give more application, so students see overall how everything now ties together.
Very nice. Congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent, another round of applause.
I just, I apologize. Mr. Coogan just raised a good point. So if this is in an extended learning time school, would you therefore say that you cannot do Project Lead the Way in a non-ELT school?
So we rolled out Project Lead the Way in, I believe, all three middle schools and our two K8s, am I correct about that? So there's different units and different projects, we've rolled it wall-to-wall across the middle school. And then at Durfee High School is where they really get really deep on the engineering side, so there's that connectivity between middle school to high school. But in terms of hands-on, science-based curriculum, this model is outstanding, it's state-funded. Of course, there's additional training and things that we have to work for, but this has been a state-line item for many, many years, that began through WPI, Worcester Polytech, was the brainchild behind the start of Project Lead the Way, and what we're able to do is really build in what we used to call the tech ed side, or the CVTE side at the middle level, which used to have woodshop and all those things have gone away. This is bringing back all those design and build concepts into the middle level, so we're getting much more hands-on, and we're finding, and you've seen, an increase in our CVTE participation in high school, particularly in the engineering pathways, because of the work in Project Lead the Way.
So I guess the answer is, we don't need, it doesn't have to be extended learning time?
No.
Were you gonna say yes, no?
No, it can be woven into your school's curriculum, whether you have ELT or not.
And does the grant run out? I know we say it's grant-funded at the beginning to you also, or is it because we're a gateway city, they continue to fund? I know sometimes you have to, you know, fund it after it runs out?
The Project Lead the Way grants only fund training, so once the grants run out, you still maintain those teachers, and they can keep doing the courses, but you have to be trained in order to run the Project Lead the Way.
And you'd, otherwise you'd embed that in your own school's professional development if they need more training?
No, so no training can be done for Project Lead the Way unless it's through Project Lead the Way. But once they're trained, they can continue running those courses for any amount of time.
I see. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Round of applause. Okay. Great work. Item number three is discussion vote to approve the selection appointment of Jessica Soder as the nurse for the Fall River Public Schools.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve is made, is there a second? Questions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins? Mayor Cora?
Yes. Item number four is a discussion vote to approve Durfee Fieldhouse solar roof. Is there a motion, questions, comments?
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any questions, comments? No?
Presentation?
There is a question? Mr. Corey?
It's more out of curiosity, and it's, it's two of my colleagues who are on the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. When it comes to, to the solar, to the solar side of things, I'm not very well-informed, and I'm just wondering on what the recommendations are from anybody from the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee might be on something like this.
Through the chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would say that the presentation's to be made this evening. I know that we've had other discussions regarding solar in the past. This project seems to make sense, given the construction that's occurring now at the high school. Certainly, Mr. Pacheco could answer more questions about it, but this particular project did not come before the Subcommittee.
No, this hasn't.
So I would encourage my colleagues to ask questions of this particular project this evening, but I would just say in general, I mean, solar makes sense. It's a great opportunity for us to take advantage of energy. Most times, it comes at a financial benefit for the district, but in this particular case...
Yeah, so, so thank you, Mr. Pacheco, again, for looking forward and trying to drive the stakes higher. As far as the fixed price on this, and the fixed, and what it's gonna cost is, over the term, it says that's gonna be a fixed cost without any, any raise as we keep going. Could you explain that?
Sure, so just before I do that, I have a representative from Select Energy, Matt Shortleve, who will go into detail on those items. The project at Durfee has always had a solar-ready component to it, because we wanted to be sure that we weren't going to have to do any work later on, just in case we didn't get to that work. This opportunity came along, and the timing was perfect. We're cutting a little close, but the timing is perfect for us. The fieldhouse roof will be renewed as part of the renovations on that particular piece, and we're ready to move in the, in the fall of next year on the installation. So I will let Matt talk to you about the numbers.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Matt Shortleve, going with Select Energy, and we do solar PPAs with a lot of cities, towns, and school districts around the Commonwealth, and having an opportunity to work with Ken and the owner's rep on the building kind of strategy, it's a, it's about a 300-kilowatt rooftop solar array. It's a non-penetrating system, it sits on top, it with ballast blocks, it gets wired right into the electric system at the school, so you'll actually be consuming the solar energy produced on-site. The rate is fixed for the term, the city won't come to the table with capital to buy the project, it'll be Select Energy doing the design, engineering, installation, the procurement, all the permitting, all the regulatory registrations, and then when it is on and running, then the school will start to consume that solar. You'll reduce what you're pulling off the solar array from what you're formerly pulling from the street, and it'll lower your operating expenses with this rate versus paying supply plus delivery through the wires.
Once the panels are situated on the roof, Mr. Pacheco, am I correct in assuming that the, the fieldhouse is still a flat roof?
It's, it's a pitched roof, but it is flat, yes. There's a, a certain amount of pitch with, with insulation and everything, that the old flat roofs are a little different today. So this is gonna have a very slight pitch, but it will be the roof that currently is there, it'll look very similar.
Enough, enough to drain water from rain?
Absolutely, yes.
Because I still have PTSD from working at Durfee all these years, and seeing all of the roof leaks that, that...
Are there leaks at Durfee?
Oh, just a little bit, sir.
All right, just checking.
And so, as we talk about the solar panels on top of the fieldhouse building, do you anticipate that it's gonna work smoothly over a good amount of years?
It will, and, and the, the method, the ballast method is true and tested, so we don't expect any issues. We'll be working closely with the, the installer of the roof, the new roof there, to be sure that everything is done under the warranty, and, and the workmanship will be there.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Just a quick question. In terms of the number of panels being installed, is this something that's gonna be able to see, be seen from ground level? So anybody driving by, I know we're gonna have a new school building, my thought is that with the new school building, we also are gonna have the fieldhouse with these panels projecting up off of the roof, or is it something that just would be noticeable, obviously, from above the roof?
Right, yes, I think the height's about 20 feet, and the, from grade to the roof, it's about 20 feet. And the panels are set back, ferocious set back, and wind uplift to avoid from all the perimeters, four to six feet, and then also for all mechanicals for access, so you can maintain HVAC and clean the drains, et cetera. They're pitched between five to 10 degrees on the roof, so at the high end, they're about a foot off the surface. You won't see them from the ground.
Not from the road level, not from ground level, okay.
No, I think you'd have to be a ways...
I mean, it's minor, and we're talking aesthetics, and we're talking about if it's coming as a savings, you're gonna balance that stuff, but you have a brand-new school building with a brand-new exterior, last thing I would wanna see is panels shooting out of the top of a fieldhouse.
Yeah, and we've also worked with the design engineer team on making sure that the electric run back to the main service is tucked away aesthetically, even from the inside of the campus, not just the streets, but from the back where the, we're doing all the electric main work right now.
Total number of panels?
It's about 850. It depends on the...
And who's responsible for those, and what's the life expectancy of those panels?
We're responsible to procure them and to maintain them. We have a network operating center here in Hockington, Massachusetts, and a team of in-house field technicians that service about 600 systems across Commonwealth today. All maintenance and repair, replacement if as needed, is on us for any normal wear and tear. Only exception might be something like vandalism or something like something, but we fix them. We do at least one preventive maintenance check a year, and then we're usually not back often, but we do come repair things if they do need to be...
Life expectancy of the panel?
The term of the agreement's 20 years, the warranty on the panels is for 25, so we'll, there'll still be some use...
Excess warranty on them?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that's the case, so 20 years, panels are warranted for about 25. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Excellent.
Thank you. So, there's no upfront costs, are there any costs to the district for this?
The, so the, the pre-solar setup was part of the MSBA project from day one, so there is no cost to the district.
Right, because we already have the, the ability to install it.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, same throughout the life, what can be, what can we expect to pay throughout the life of this project? I mean, having the solar panels up there, so this, they're totally covered, there's nothing that we could have to pay for?
No, exactly. The only thing we'll be paying for is the electricity that they produce at that fixed rate.
Right, okay, and then, the roof is getting replaced?
Completely, yes.
And then the panels will go on?
Yes.
Right, so this is probably happening sometime from now?
It's, it's actually gonna happen next summer, the roof will be replaced, as soon as the roof is, that work is finished, then there'll be coordination with the installer to put the panels up.
Right, and we're putting air conditioning in the fieldhouse, right? As part of the renovation?
There are HVAC units, yes.
Excellent. That's all, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Agia?
So what is the thing called, a different, I see one for the urban fieldhouse, and then there's another Block 9? Summary of Block, quote, quote, 9, on page 7. Is that another, is that another part of the building or something?
No, the blocks refer to the state incentive program, and the way that the, the capacity is allocated for projects is in a declining block schedule. So you'll notice there are two prices, two, there are two charts, one price and another one. One assumes Block 8 of the National Grid awards, the other assumes Block 9.
I'm, I'm looking at one page, it says project summary and estimated savings for the fieldhouse, year one forecast savings of 9,200. And the next page says Block 9, year one forecast savings 7,400. What does that mean?
If we get an incentive in Block 8, it will be worth more cents per kilowatt-hour than it would be if we received an incentive from Block 9.
You speaking to the microphone, please? Thank you.
If we receive an incentive in Block 8, your PPA rate will be a little lower. If we receive an incentive in a subsequent Block 9 with a lower incentive, the PPA rate will be a little bit higher, because the rates are different on those two charts.
So we're not adding those together?
No. We're just, it's just one project, one rooftop, right at the fieldhouse.
So the most we're gonna get in year one is 9,200? 9,200?
Yep.
And we get free electric?
So we're paying for electric.
So it's a power purchase agreement, so you're paying for the electricity, that's why we're not paying for the equipment. We're gonna still pay for the electricity, but we're paying at a much lower rate than National Grid would offer. National Grid's numbers plus delivery is, I don't know exactly what it is, but I think we're 14 cents, 14 cents.
Yeah, it's about 13 and a half.
Right, so it's two cents more per kilowatt...
Per hour.
Right, per hour. So the difference is, is where they're putting up the upfront costs...
Yeah, it's about 13 and a half.
Right, so it's two cents more per kilowatt.
Per hour.
Right, per hour. So, the difference is, is where they're putting up the upfront costs to put the equipment in, and they're gonna sell the electricity back to us at that fixed rate, no matter what happens on the National Grid level, no matter what happens on electricity prices, that's our price. And it'll go up, it would only change a little bit on the, on the, depending on the state incentives. It's got nothing to do with the electricity.
And it's only for the fieldhouse?
It's, it's gonna be connected to the fieldhouse, right? The other roof, we, we still have to do some work with the designer to see if we're going to have an opportunity. If you look at the main, at the design of the other building, we have a, a faux roof that's going to be kind of an A-frame, so that roof is going to take away some of our solar capabilities on that bigger roof. So, we're gonna take a look at, once, once we have the building up, what it looks like, and if it has any potential to put a solar array on that roof also.
So, you can tell us how much electric it costs for the fieldhouse only? That's where you're getting these estimates?
Yep, 'cause there are, what, four meters on campus?
Yes.
So, that one is the one that we isolated to analyze the cost of delivered rates, what does the PPA would look like, this is the difference, so that would be the savings.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for solar, and I, I thought it was very low, not in the industry, I don't, $9,000 a year for all of that material work, all that, doesn't seem like a lot of money to me.
Yeah.
You're saying you've looked around?
Well, we're not paying, we're not paying for anything. So, we're paying for the electricity only. That equipment, I, I don't have a dollar value, but I can tell you that it's, you know, it's pretty high. I know we paid for the Morton system and the Morton capabilities. We own that system, so that obviously our take on that particular piece is much larger. But with this building here, we don't own the equipment. We're basically leasing the roof space and then reaping the benefit of a, of a set price.
Right, and you've looked at other?
We have.
You came across this gentleman from doing research and homework?
This is, and it's the largest in, in the area, the company, and we've done our homework along with the architect and OPM.
Right.
To be sure this is the best deal for Durfee.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to get at, is you've looked at it all, it's not just, we did one company?
No, not at all.
You've researched it, and so, I'm gonna be supportive of it. I wish you had both of those together, so we get 16,000 a year, but wouldn't everybody else. So, with that, I yield.
Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you. On the project delivery page, it says that you're gonna perform quality inspections at project milestones. Again, I'm gonna refer back to my days of working at Durfee, and I remember how many times that the companies that were monitoring the heating and air conditioning systems, which were all on the roof, there was a lot of maintenance through the years, and every once in a while, they would have to use our custodial staff for assistance. Are you gonna be using any of our staff in any of your maintenance updates, or will you be using your people?
Just for access, we'll ask for access, right? So, we're not badged, keyed, so there'll be, you know, Cory background check, we'll be calling to schedules, non-interrupt access for student learning or activities, and then our team has to perform it all. The agreement says that we'll cooperate, right? If you notice that there's an emergency, you may elect to switch the switch off.
Yeah.
But other than that, it's, these are, maintenance pays, right? It's good to take care of these, but they don't need a lot of maintenance. We monitor them in a network operations center, they're all internet-connected, and it tells us if it's performing, and if it doesn't perform, we have liquidated damages that we have to pay you, the difference.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. We, we're highly motivated to make sure it's very productive.
Yes.
Because the more it produces, the more you'll save, and the more we'll earn, and if we don't produce what we say, then we have to pay you liquidated damages in the contract. So, we are pretty sharp on watching to make sure that it's up and running, and that, you know, mechanically it's in good, good shape. But they don't, by nature, require a, a lot of maintenance. They're just, it's the inverters, just this, a fan, and it's moving electricity in the power electronics, otherwise it's sun and silicone, it's.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Exley.
A question about, after the life of the agreement is reached, 20 years from now?
Right.
We have the solar panels sitting on the roof.
Yes.
What's gonna happen?
We're responsible to take them away at our expense.
Okay.
You could negotiate to extend, and there are intervals during the period to purchase at, at like a fair market value at that time.
Right, that's my concern, I just don't want them sitting on the roof now, after the agreement, and then we have to pick up the cost of removing them. So, if that's included, I think that's very fair. And, and there are increased insurance, I think we're self-insured, so, I know, you know, from time to time, there's a malfunction, I know, you know, sometimes solar panel might catch fire, but I guess there's no self-insure, it doesn't matter, we're taking the risk on that side of things, but very minimal risk. Right?
So, we, we're, we're technically not self-insured when it comes to buildings, so we do have insurance that covers us for loss or any kind of casualty, and the cost of adding these panels didn't raise our, our insurance rates at the other three schools that we currently have PPAs on. Not, not one penny, so.
I didn't want that to offset the savings.
Right, exactly.
Excellent, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. I've got a few questions myself. Mr. Pacheco, the panels on Morton Middle School, this school, are they ballasted system, like the panels that'll be on the fieldhouse?
Yes, yes.
So, they're not, they don't penetrate this roof?
No, they don't penetrate this roof.
Okay.
They were part of this project, though.
They were part of the project, so we own those panels?
We own these panels, it's a different process.
You don't have the information how much it generates in revenue?
I don't know how much it generate, how much it saves us in revenue, 'cause basically we're buying the electricity, we're using the electricity, yes.
Right, so it's a total offset?
Exactly.
If this building, it costs 30,000 a year to?
Yeah, we're probably, I, and I'm gonna take a guess here, because I've, I've looked at these bills, they're probably about, about 900 and change, maybe 1,000 change every two months. So, we're, we're roughly making here about 5,000 and change, 5,000 reduction, I'm sorry. Reducing electricity cost by 5,000 a year.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of questions. The non-ballasted system, I understand, is the easiest system, however, my biggest concern on a non-ballasted system is you get a really bad windstorm, Massachusetts is not immune to, as we've heard in the news in the past, even tornadoes in some parts of the state, these panels can fly in off, hit a student. Who's liability? What do we do?
Well, we hope this never happens.
Of course, we hope it never happens, but it's a possibility.
The, the contract contemplates, you know, such a scenario under force majeure, under who's responsible.
So, who, who is responsible?
We're both insured. It would be a force majeure event, and I would think that both insurance companies would try to get the other one to pay for it. We've never had that, so where we have had a problem is if there was something that the system caused damage to the building, we've stepped up and repaired and fixed or paid for new things there.
And that's happened before?
Yeah, we've put holes in roofs before. We've done 500-plus systems in Massachusetts. We're really good about it, we're really, really good. We have an OSHA 30 certified trainer on staff, our safety officer, got our own project managers in-house. We'll survey you, we publish our surveys, we bonus people based on how the surveys come back. 10 years, largest in Massachusetts, we've done 65 projects with other public entities and nonprofits under this procurement program, and we, we try to take all the preventive measures we can, good manufact, good installation procedures. We've adopted code compliance requirements, and we've been a leader, we teach our industry training classes here in Massachusetts, the Solar Energy Business Association in New England, our service team takes the lead on running all the safety and maintenance training programs, so we feel like that it's a low probability, think everything is possible. The contract does contemplate things like cause, remedies, force majeure, insurance.
But it doesn't indemnify the, the city and the schools?
So, what we do to drill into that, it, we, because we use this standard template contract under this RFP award, it's a, it's for both publics and not-for-profits, so it's a template, and it has indemnification in it, but for publics, what we often insert is to the extent applicable by law.
Correct.
And therefore, as a public entity, you've got the Commonwealth, the MGL on your side of like, hey, look at what, I, I can't be.
Yep, okay.
And so, we just don't wanna waive our right to be able to pursue that in the event that something terrible happens and the company's in trouble.
Understand.
That hasn't happened yet.
Our business, I get it.
We're 10 years in, and we feel very financially sustainable, and we feel very responsible, and be a privilege to work with the city on this project.
Next question, how much does this installation cost?
So, in equipment, so we will come to the city council at some point to talk to you guys about a payment in lieu of taxes agreement following up on this.
Okay.
So, we'll articulate.
Yep, can you just speak into the microphone, please, maybe lift it up?
We'll, we'll be able to kind of articulate project costing when we apply, where we come speak to you and the board of assessors on the pilot discussion, we like to proactively enter a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the city. The cost of, to install the whole thing is different than what the value will be on the building permit, so, building permit's probably gonna be in the neighborhood of about $300,000. The total installed cost, when you include labor, might be closer to 6 to 650,000.
So, about 900,000?
No, it'll be six, so about 6 to 650,000.
Oh, total, that's including the building permits and everything?
And equipment.
So, 650?
It depends what the, most cities waive our building permit fees, so.
I'm sorry, most cities will what?
Most cities will waive the permit fees, but, no, it's a small drop, but otherwise, it's in that range, Mr. Mayor.
So, 650,000 for the install. You haven't applied for, you haven't applied for any of the smart blocks yet, correct?
No, you need a contract and interconnection agreement to apply for those.
Correct. So, you haven't done an interconnection study?
Have not.
Do you know if there's phase three on Elsbury Street?
There's three phases, 3,000 amps, 480 volt, and we just got one in up at Millstone at the airport, approved this week despite prior substation upgrades.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, you don't have any issues with interconnection, hopefully?
It's the same Chase Road substation, Ken saw it, he's like.
Right, but it, but there's three phase on Elsbury Street to connect?
Yeah.
That's great, okay. So, who pays the interconnection fees if there are any in the study?
Provider. We do, but that goes, so you'll see in the proposal that if there's a extra cost from the utility, it goes into the install cost to calculate the rate. So, we're not assuming a study here, because it's only 250 AC, and typically those go through without studies, so we don't expect it is, but what we've made clear is, if we have a study, and if there's an upgrade expense, you'll have the ability to evaluate that and say, well, what did that do to my rate?
So, you come back to us before?
Pre-construction.
Pre-construction.
So, if it all of a sudden comes out to be.
Because that 9,200 savings can shrink big time.
It could, it could. We don't expect it, just because of what we just experienced at Millstone and other projects we've done in town, that we think it'll, should be okay. The big upgrades were paid nearby when the others up at the airport went up, and so those have been allocated to prior projects, so we feel, especially if we move in a timely fashion, we ought to be able to secure the IA in about three months.
When did you, when did you apply for the Millstone Medical?
Three months ago.
Three months ago? And it was approved in what, which block?
It was in, the interconnection was approved, we don't have the incentive yet.
Oh, the interconnection was approved, so you're a long way from getting a, a smart block allocation.
We have a contract, and we have an interconnection agreement, so now we'll apply with smart, and we'll wait. In fact, today, the Department of Energy Resources Renewable Energy Division had a stakeholder briefing on the expansion of the smart program to account for the extreme amount of volume coming into the National Grid service area, so that they recommended to expand the program and, and reload the capacity and the incentives to support it.
Hypothetically speaking, if all the blocks are full?
Yep.
All the way through nine, are there even nine blocks right now?
There are eight.
There are eight, right.
But it looks like they're gonna go, what they showed us today at Mass Art was, you know, 800 more megawatts, mostly for National Grid.
So, those first eight blocks pretty much filled up in the first three months?
They did, but there was about a year of pre-selling during the gap between the SREC and the smart program.
So, what happens to the rate if you don't get into block nine, which doesn't even exist yet?
It'll change, so.
So, this proposal's, this proposal's on a lot of assumptions, correct?
Not, the assumptions are that we'll get an incentive, that there won't be, that there's no cost accounted for in interconnection upgrade cost, and it, it con, it contemplates a 2020 installation, which is a lower investment tax credit, but the block nine value, what, assumes a 4% drop in incentive between eight and nine. The department today put 2% drop on the table, so it might be a lower PPA rate than what's quoted here. What we always do with these is we, and the contract says it in the, in the recitals, that we'll provide a copy of the statement of qualification for the incentive program, so that you've got transparency to see, like, okay, you told me if it was eight, you'd get this, well, here's the eight, and there's the rate. So, the contract will reflect the actual award by the regulator.
That's still an assumption as of today, so that's not an official rate.
Right, so, we'll, sequence-wise, we're gonna sign an agreement, do the utility engineering, apply, we're gonna get it back, we're gonna apply for the incentive, and then we're gonna get the incentive and put the budget back in front of Ken, and then he'll say, it looks just like what we talked about, let's sign, or he'll say, or let's proceed with a notice to proceed to construct, or he'll say, hey, that's not the deal we wanted, we're not gonna proceed.
Correct. So, a couple of last questions here. So, it's 11 and a half cents with no escalator. Ken, you mentioned the possibility of, or the, the analogy that this was like leasing the roof. Why not just lease the roof for a flat $15,000 a year, so we know exactly what we're getting, and allow them to go sell the power to somebody else with an escalator, so they still retain their profit margin, while we get just a straight lease? Why wasn't that considered?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that we didn't consider it. What I, what I have seen with the rate is that the rate is extremely volatile, and the city obviously has, has been involved with a cohort that's been buying electricity for a long time, and hedging in all of the appropriate things that need to be done, and in my former role, one of the things that, that was very, very educational was the fact that the market is, is so volatile that if you don't secure everything, the slightest little bump with the $2 million that the school department spends on electricity could be devastating to the budget. So, this gives us that security, that we don't have to worry about that electricity cost, because it's gonna maintain, and it's, it's a budgetable item, as opposed to rolling the dice, where at the end of the year, we do some transfers, and a lot of times they're utilities. So, this would give us some security.
Well, it's budgetable on the $40,000 worth of power out of 2 million, this is about 40,000 a year in power.
Yes.
Right, so it's.
But it's, but it's, it's still a piece.
It's a very, very, very small piece, 40,000 to 2 million.
Durfee High School, $75,000 of electricity a month.
What is it?
Durfee High School currently, under the system that we have now, is $75,000 a month.
Right, so this is a very, very small piece. So, my final question, where I'm getting at, is 650,000 is install cost. All I'm saying is that if this plan doesn't work out, and perhaps we're not satisfied with the final rate, or they don't get into the certain block, it's a lot easier for the city and the school department, especially with some of the capital money that we have right now, to spend the 650,000, own the system, and generate the revenue or the power that we need, the entire power, at not 11 and a half cents, but zero. So, yes, we're spending the 650 upfront, but we own the system outright, and we don't have the power costs associated with that, generating a greater savings over the life of the panels. That's a legitimate option that could be on the table, and perhaps this gentleman can, can propose that as well. I think that's where I was trying to get at, that that forty thousand a year is a very, very small number for an install cost that really is not a huge number, six hundred fifty thousand. The power that's going to generate over the next twenty plus years is pretty substantial and can either be sold or utilized by the school department and the city versus paying into a private project on a roof that we own where they're making the profit. So I think that there's, there's another way to look at this where the school department and the city can actually generate a new revenue stream, much like we do here on more in middle school, which we do own the system outright. So, I'm not going to say either way what we should do, I think every option should be on the table, including the option I just said. So I think you should maybe, you can work on a proposal that allows the city to purchase those panels as well and do a cost benefit analysis and see which one comes out on top at the end of the twenty years. I think you're going to find that if we bought it ourselves, which is why this gentleman wants to install them themselves, that there's a greater motive and greater profit incentive at the end of the life of the panels. So that would be my recommendation, and I think that's what we've done in the past, we did it here on this building, the city does it on the city side occasionally. As we do do PPA, you know, power purchase agreements as well, but buying it and owning it and generating the revenue and generating the power ourselves, I think it's just going to be a better solution in the long run. My personal opinion. Okay, but thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate your time and your, and your answers. Okay, any other questions, comments?
One more question.
Mr. Huxley?
All right. So we're talking about buying it ourselves, right, and that it's a possibility, and we can save more money in the long haul. Is there another, like, is there another check and balance to this, is this have to go to the city council before this program?
The only thing we would go to city council for would be the lease, the lease agreement.
All right, so if we approve this, we're locked in tonight?
It goes to the lease, yes.
Right, so we can't exercise those other options?
We could table, we could put it, well, not necessarily, I think we could exercise those other options, you can put together a proposal for another option. We have, we have to wait for the, this is still a long road. The blocks are all full in Massachusetts, smart block eight is already full, they're going to go to a smart block nine, that could take many, many months, if not a year plus, that's number one. Second, you have to do an interconnection study, that's going to be many, many months, possibly eight plus months for an interconnection study. It probably won't be a problem because the phase three, that's great news. What is it? And it's a small system, very small system, it's not a megawatt or something?
So if we agree tonight, we can still back out at some point?
I think we're hearing that, right, is that true?
Right, but we're just allowing this process to move forward.
Is that, is that a true statement, Mr. Pacheco, can we back out?
I, yeah, I, I don't think that, so the, the issue, the reason why I'm here today is because we're trying to, to not, trying to stay with the construction schedule and everything else. So we've, we've talked with Suffolk about moving the roof installation up in order to accommodate a fall installation of the system. I, I can't tell you whether or not we can completely back out of this, I know we have the option to back out if the numbers don't, don't agree with what we currently have.
Fall installation, like this fall?
No.
No, next fall?
Yeah, next fall, right, yeah, fall of twenty, right.
So we have a long way to go, right. We don't even know what the final rate's going to be. So you want us to agree to something tonight that doesn't, that's not final?
At some point we have to agree to it, and we're not going to have, I mean, the process is the process, so I don't think that we can not agree to anything because then the process can't move forward.
So what we could do is we could table it and say that we'd like to see an option of what the, the profit and loss sheet would look like if we owned the system. That's what we could do, and see which one checks out better in the long run. That's an option that the committee has as well.
So.
You still before, Mr. Huxley? If, is it, is it possible to table this another month and come up with some different options, just so we can be sure and, and we feel comfortable moving forward?
It's certainly the committee's business to pursue whatever agenda item you'd like, I, I would anecdotally say that we do a lot of projects and we have occasionally either nonprofit or public entity a purchase. Like either come out of pocket or do a bond or debt exclusion or some way find the money and invest in these. We've done sixteen at Harvard University, they own all of them, they're, they're an example of someone who buys their systems. There was a town who bought one last year that we didn't do a PPA on. It's going to take about eight years, nine years to break even cash on cash with no interest, not that you'd pay high interest, but on, on a purchase. So come out of pocket or go get the money, six fifty-ish, and project manage it, go get it done, acquire them, install them, manage them, manage the regulations, work with the utility. And then it's eight to ten years to get your money back on that. In this case, it's no capital, it's a pre-negotiated, pre-procured agreement through the energy consortium. You build the school, we come in and put the solar on it, it's fixed for term, it's behind the meter. So the, the greater the volatility or the inflation associated with the national grid delivery and the commodity, it's a hedge, it's a portion. The city and district will make the determination on your priorities for capital, but anecdotally, that's kind of how these work out. We often will walk through an analysis, it comes out with those types of outcomes, and vast majority moves forward on the PPA because it's a, it's a tried and true. Our profit motive exists, we're a for-profit entity, none of these unto themselves are singularly very profitable. It's the consortium where we have done dozens and dozens, it's helped us as an organization grow an asset company, which has helped us become more financially sustainable over, like the downturn when the market's slow. So we appreciate your consideration on the PPA, we think it's a great program, a lot of folks have been able to enjoy those benefits, we look to bring it to the city, Fall River.
Very good. Mr. Huxley, you yield. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. Just a follow-up, so you mentioned your company's request of the city for a pilot. Does this go forward if the city doesn't agree to the pilot?
Uh, it, it gives us great cost certainty and allows us to know we're going to be contributing. We are doing pilots on every one though because since Department of Local Services began to advise local assessing boards to tax for personal property tax, these third-party owned assets at public properties, then we've begun to, for about a year we've been doing them.
I'm just saying, obviously you know, the pilot's completely out of the realm of this board.
Right.
So, I, I, I heard you mention it.
Right.
That that's part of the process would be eventually to come before the city, the mayor and, and the board.
The board of assessors.
Board of assessors to, to ask for a pilot for this project.
Right.
And I'm just wondering if, if that wasn't approved, does that throw a wrench in this project going forward?
Uh, it, it's a cost driver and we need to get cost certainty around it, so we'd have to work something out.
Figure out what the cost would be if it wasn't approved?
Yeah, I mean, we could look at the tables and try to understand what the risk exposure is, but generally it's good for folks, they find that twenty years is, hey, that's pretty good because the asset actually declines really fast. Except the, the benefit, depends how the assessor calculates it.
And the PPA summary that's, the PPA summary that's before the committee tonight.
Yes.
Your year one forecast savings, ninety-two hundred dollars?
Correct.
Over twenty years? So total savings for the life of this, for the district, is going to be how much?
If there's zero inflation against what you pay from the grid today, it'd be about a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Hundred, I had it at a hundred eighty-four, I just wanted to make sure that that number that I had was similar to that.
If the cost of grid delivered power goes up, that savings increases, right, and it's your avoided cost is better.
I'm just thinking of the man's proposal when he suggests that we buy it outright, six hundred fifty thousand, we install, we own it.
Yep.
And I'm thinking, we're looking at the savings if we lease it of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, so it's going to take a long amount of time to recoup, well, you said about ten years, right, to recoup the cost of installation before we even start to see a savings.
It's also more equipment to manage and the complex, it's.
And I'm not saying I'm, I'm not necessarily, you know, disagreement with the proposal, you know, I think we're doing it here, and we own it here, we're managing it here, we're seeing our savings here, so we've got some experience with it, so that may be something down the road that, you know, is an option for us. I just, I don't want to derail the project because it obviously is part of a larger construction project with the school building, but I also don't want to pass up an opportunity to own it ourselves and see some savings eventually down the road that could last for many years and continually to put savings back into the city's coffers and ultimately saving the taxpayers money. So, that's all I have for questions this evening, I thank you for the presentation and, and thank you, Mr. Pacheco as well. Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, one thing, um, so from where I sit, if this project was coming before me and I was going to bring something to the committee, solar would not be my first choice. I've got roofs, I've got rooftop units, I have windows, I have boilers in a lot of schools. So on a list of priority, if I'm going to spend seven hundred thousand dollars, it's not going to be on solar. Because I have a lot of seven hundred thousand dollar projects that are waiting. And as the mayor knows, because he's the one that's, that's allowing us to go down there and pick up the MSBA projects, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff in the pipeline right now. And I can keep going, but what, what I'm saying is, is that it wouldn't be my priority.
Mr. Pacheco, just, just to respond to that though, in all fairness, when you install a window or a new boiler, that doesn't have the ability to generate revenue. If you spend the seven hundred thousand dollars on the solar panels, you are now selling the power to the grid or to another entity for the eleven and a half cents. So if you times eleven and a half cents times three hundred sixty-nine thousand kilowatts, that's a total revenue stream of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand over the twenty-year period. Divide that by, you know, a yearly basis, that's forty-two thousand dollars a year generated to the school department. The city doesn't need, I mean, we need it, but we would give it to the, it's on your school, we'd give that to you. So you'd have forty-two thousand a year in your budget to put towards other energy costs, to put towards teachers, whatever you wanted to do, instead of the ninety-two hundred dollar savings. That's at, exactly what was explained, the fixed rate. We all know that energy costs are going to go up over the next twenty years, so what I'm arguing is that, yes, we can spend seven hundred thousand to buy the system, that's our fixed cost, we can put that into our general debt, we can take it out of the contingency money, that's there. But now you've just created a revenue stream of forty-two thousand plus dollars a year annually for the school department as opposed to ninety-two hundred. So I'm looking at it at forty-two thousand or ninety-two hundred, yeah, there's some maintenance stuff in there and things like that, we're doing it on this building, we're still generating a profit here. So we know that we have the ability to do that in-house. So all I'm saying is, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm not telling the committee which way to vote, I'm saying let's maybe compare both options. One where we buy it and we can extrapolate that debt over the life of the contract or even beyond, a little bit less rather, not beyond, but less, versus this PPA, that's all I'm saying. And I think that that's the reasonable, smart thing to do, is to compare both, both proposals on a, you know, in a fully transparent way. Makes sense? Unlike the boiler, that's not going to generate you any money, unless you know any boilers that are generating money or windows.
We'll save us tons.
You know?
Along with the windows, so every time we replace a window, we've got energy savings and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It, it all, you know, it all adds up, but I understand.
Other questions from the committee, comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Kugan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Hetzel?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Mayor Correa?
No. Doesn't pass. Three, three.
Mr. Chairman, if we make a motion to have the proposal brought back before the committee with a analysis as to what it would cost to purchase the panels as it was presented as a lease to us, so we can weigh the options and whether or not there'd be a, a, a savings to the district if, if we.
So comparative analysis, yeah, comparative analysis.
Second.
Made and seconded, uh, roll call.
Question?
Question, Mr. Agia?
A comment, just a comment, the reason why I voted yes for the project was basically what Mr. Pacheco had just indicated. I do think it's worth it to look at things and all for the comparative analysis, but I know there's a, many projects, but one project that was intriguing to me that is, could be outstanding for energy and electric consumption was the, uh, moving the gas lines down to Talbot to actually get Talbot off of electric heat, and I think that's going to save us a hell of a lot more money if we did that for the six hundred thousand than over the life of the Talbot building, we just invested a lot of money into it. To me, that's a no-brainer as far as when we have some one-time monies, and I believe that that would get us MSBA reimbursement on major projects. So along with the comparative analysis, I'd like to see if we could maybe get some of those projects that make sense, we do still have some money to spend in one-time monies. But I think it, we have to look at it as a totality of all those projects together, not just one solo project, so I'm going to go for this, but I think more information will be helpful. I yield.
I think also important, just, just a clarifying question, a clarifying statement, the city would also, you know, work with the school committee to bond that seven hundred thousand dollar payment, it doesn't have to come out of your one-time monies. That's an option, that's available to the committee because it's a capital expense, but the city would also, you know, be willing to bond and purchase those, that solar equipment, that's a possibility as well. Other questions, Mr. Costa?
Just a quick question in, in terms of timeframe, is that a proposal that could make its way back for the committee's consideration for next meeting? So that in the event after doing the analysis, the information suggests that maybe the proposal tonight was the better one of the two? That we could make that and still stay on track with the construction timelines. I don't want to prohibit, obviously for the savings, I don't want to, but I think the man makes a good point that, you know, let's look at both options. And, and once we analyze both, then the committee will be better informed about what decision that it wants to make in terms of this particular project. So if it's something that can come back to the committee next month, we can look at it and weigh the options on both projects and then take a vote either way on either one of them and still stay within the same timeframe that you need in order to move along in the, the construction schedule. So, the both gentlemen are nodding, so I'm assuming that's an affirmative, that that's something that can be brought back to us. My colleague, Mr. Agia, does make a good point, Talbot Middle School has historically, because it runs solely on electric, has been a huge drain for resources for us. Gets some help now because of the solar panels down there, but the money to purchase the panels for this project, as the mayor says, maybe we could get help in, because it's a capital project to bond for it, and maybe the investment is better suited there in getting gas lines down here so we can get off solely electric there. So I think there's still some information can be shared with this committee that puts us in a better position than we are tonight, and that's what I'm hoping this will accomplish, and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Kugan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kugan?
I, I'd like to make a suggestion that we move item seven up.
Second.
Okay.
Item seven, the church at Henry Lord, because these people have been patient all night and I'd like to see, uh, see us take a vote so they can get about their business also.
Okay, motions are made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, no, okay. Item number seven, discussion of votes to approve Henry Lord Community School usage.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made, there's a second, questions, comments, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Kugan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Absolutely.
Mr. Martins?
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Thank you, guys. You're welcome to stay. I'll let them just leave the room.
Yeah. Because they had their vote, they'll wait and see how they may know.
Okay. Item number five, discussion of first read of the school committee slash superintendent's goals.
Very excited to come with the first read on this draft forward to the committee tonight. This encapsulates the, the nine areas articulated at the working session, what we're able to do. And I want to thank Dr. Tracy Curley for her outstanding work on, on, on helping me make this a smart document. As you can see, we have the district performance indicators, which are the state accountability indicators, then we have under learning and teaching, the work we're doing around the district improvement plan. Then we have extended learning time, the deep dive there, same with the gate program, special education implementation in early childhood. Then we also have the goals that we articulated in facilities, capital improvements and transportation, with success measured by and for each one of those. And then the student success pathways, which is the chapter seventy-four programs, alt ed, early college and the dual language model that we're hoping to build at Viveris. And then finally, the continued work on, on human capital, you can see there are some missing pieces yet, as this is a draft, we have to get the exact retention rates to show what the, what the growth goal is. But I'm feeling pretty good that this is a good first draft, first read, if any committee members have any comments. Tonight, fine, if not, just email me and we'll continue to work on this, we'll get back to the committee in October for a second read. Tomorrow, the evaluation subcommittee is meeting led by the chair of that committee, Mr. Hetzel, and we're going to go over the, uh, last year's process and completion towards how we continue the superintendent's evaluation based on the district goals of last year. So it's all timely, this meets our timeline about how we get this out for a first or second read, and we look forward to, to just continuing the overall productive work in the school system towards improvement.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve, and there's been a second, Mr. Agia, you have a question, comment?
Just a couple of comments, and they're going to be the same as it was at the work session. So what I'd like to see before we approve any of these is a look at the last year's goals with updates on whether we met those goals or not before we move on to new ones.
As part of the evaluation process, so that's what we're working on with the evaluation subcommittee, so you'll get a copy of that soon.
What I'm looking at more specifically though is the ELT and the gate program. In last year's goals, the ones that I saw, it looks like we were supposed to over the last school year do an analysis. school year, do an analysis and come up with recommendations. Seems like we're a year behind on that now.
Yeah.
And I'd just like information on that because I do think that's important. And we've got to get it done in a timely fashion.
Right. So we began last year, Mr. Agia. But as you know, school's work, the summer's off. And our committee and our task force that began the work last year on both those endeavors did a whole bunch of work, and they continue to do some more work. And we're looking forward to be back in front of the committee this winter with our recommendations. But this is very detailed, intense work. And as I said, we began it last year and we'll complete it this year for decisions of the committee to be determined in the future.
Yeah, I'm only going by what was in writing. So it's not, I'm not taking, don't take it personal. It's just that what was in writing said we were going to get something in the spring for recommendations. So when I look at that, I say, okay, this year, we just kept the programs going. Are we just kicking the can down the road? Or are we going to get to a real issue?
We're going to get to a real issue on ELT and Gate, which are issues that I identified when I came on board as superintendent. And now we're able to present to you what we think is the long-term solution for both of those things.
And you're just saying this in January rather than last year. That's...
Yeah.
The other thing is if we can get some school turnaround plans, the asset strengths challenges, the documents that the principals have given, if we could get those, I don't recall seeing them.
We shared all those with the committee already. I shared a file two weeks ago, as you asked.
Yeah, I might have missed it, but I'm...
Oh, you did then because I did send that out as requested at the last school committee meeting.
Thank you. I hope to be able to see that.
So I'm going to resend it to you specifically tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much.
And I want you to read it and call me by five and tell me what you think.
So the other comment is on the special education achievement.
Yes.
So the last bullet reads, "Meeting or exceeding the targets for ELA Math and Science on 2020 MCAS for the special education."
Yes.
But in the front part, it talks about making moderate to substantial progress towards targets. It doesn't have to be done now, but I think before the, we should clarify that so we're on the same...
So at the district level, that's the only way you get identified. So they use the terms moderate to substantial progress. But at the subcategory level, we're able to articulate based on the department sets targets. And then we can, it's a metric that we can actually say, did we meet the twenty-three percent target towards growth or whatever the target was. But for the district overall, they only rank you as you're making substantial, two other terms, Tracy, significant...
Moderate, moderate.
Or partial. Yeah.
So how about the targets for the schools?
Each school has its own individual targets. And we'll be sharing all that accountability data. And you'll get that next month, most likely.
I'm saying, where do I see that in here?
So you'll, you're going to see it in number one, but you don't see it now because it hasn't been released yet. So we're going to release that soon. And I'm going to be able to give you a self-evaluation to show all, as we promised Mr. Martins too, all of the district indicators to show by school, to show you...
That we meet the same standard as the...
Yes.
Other one, it just hasn't been here yet is the...
Yes.
It sounds like that's what you're saying. Yep. The only other one I had was in the one about the revol- Evolve Academy at RPA, competency on three of the five competencies. Not sure what that is, but if you could get us something to know what Evolve is and what the competencies are. And it's on the last page, just a second to the last bullet.
Right. So those are the competencies on the, is they using a competency-based model? The kids have to meet X, Y, and Z competencies. We'll share all that. I got a presentation coming up on Evolve Pilot, most likely in December, January, to the committee as well.
That's all I'm looking for, is something to tell us what that's about. With that, Aye-o. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, Mr. Superintendent, this is an aggressive goals agenda. I do have a question around special education. One of the bullets there is around professional development of special education staff. If I could ask Director Loesch to come up for a second, please. I want to congratulate Director Loesch for becoming the Assistant Superintendent for Special Needs. Certainly a very necessary area in our school department. It's a growing area. The caseload is large, sometimes very complex with the needs of those students. So my question is around the professional development of paraprofessionals in the classroom. Is there any, is there any motion, excuse me, any movement along those lines?
Yep. First, thank you for the congratulations. It's really an honor to be in the position. Right now, we've adopted a new platform, an online platform for education of our paras. You know, given the multiple disabilities we have throughout the district and the specialized programming, we had to identify a platform that really was going to be able to meet multiple needs. So we brought on an exceptional child, which we're going to be able to set curriculum for each para and each, whether it's inclusion, sub-separate, what disability they may be in, to have them have really a set agenda for items that they'd be able to study and learn and really progress their education in terms of students with special needs and challenges. We're also looking to leverage our in-district PCBAs to help really start working on student engagement and dealing with behavior on a regular basis.
As we all know, as a school board, you know, in prior administrations, there was a lot of patronage involved in the hiring of paras through many years past. And we can't get away with that anymore. We really need paras to be on point because the needs of the student is unbelievable today, that the social, emotional needs of these students, as well as the intellectual and academic needs of these students, is huge as we try to prepare them for 21st century job skills. And so I think it's imperative that paras, you know, take their positions seriously and that that's a directed motion moving forward as a school department. With that, Aye-o. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Nope. We have a motion. It's seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Okay, item number six. Is discussion of votes to approve selection and appointment of Sarah Pereira and Amanda Revanel, maybe? Did I say that right? As attendance officers for the fall Republic Schools.
So moved.
Questions were made and seconded. Roll call, please. No question. Mr. Agia?
So I have a few questions on, not the appointment here, but at the last meeting, I raised some concerns about whether we just needed to add another attendance officer? Do we need to have more information, more action plans and the like? And I'm, as one member, I'm not convinced that we've gotten much information that would sell me on why we need another attendance officer other than our attendance is not good. And I'm not here to argue that our attendance is good. I just don't know if adding an attendance officer with nothing else is going to make a difference. And at the end of the day, it's a lot more than just the attendance officers that affect education. So we have to work with the schools. We have to see what the action steps are on how to handle attendance cases. It's not just as simple as just add a person. So I'd still have some of the same questions on what's the rationale. So maybe somebody could try to sell me on it.
Sure. So as you know, the school committee voted to approve this position at the last meeting. I don't know what your vote was at that time, but that was the will of the committee.
Let me just, sorry to interrupt. Sorry to interrupt. Just want to be very clear about what my comment was at the time, at the meeting. And I'm not trying to be against attendance officers. I don't want that to be displayed as such. But at the time, when I made the motion to try and get us to get an attendance officer for the start of school was to help the kids in the schools. My comments at that same time, which was very clear, was that we have some questions and some concerns, and we need more information. And I want to say my exact quote was something along the lines of, "I'll make a motion to approve all of these positions with the caveat that somebody come back to us to tell us about what the plans would be for the attendance officer additional, the additional attendance officer." I also mentioned things like, how do you get the students, the attendance officers to pick children up? Lot of issues. So before you answer, I just wanted to make sure it was very clear for the record that the committee did vote. Before the vote happened, I made a statement to say that we need more information. No one argued at that point. It was a very cordial vote to get the thing done. As one member of the committee, it's my expectation that if any member of the committee makes valid points at a meeting, that they get the information that they asked for. And it doesn't always have to happen to you, Dr. Malone. It can be from your assistants and other people to watch the meetings, to pay attention, and give the information back to the committee, whether it's one member or all members.
Did you receive that last week?
I received a one-page document that really, to me, wasn't that good. But I'll let you respond.
Well, I answered your question, sent an email out last week as a memo to describe why we need the additional attendance officer, why we recommended that, and why we put that forward. Now, attendance is probably the biggest single issue in the fall Republic Schools. It's so big that we're probably one of the only communities in Massachusetts that has a mayoral task force on student attendance. Chronic absenteeism rates have been horrific historically. I will say that this past year, we've had some improvements in student attendance. So what we're doing is working. And what we're trying to do is link intricately. The attendance officer role is more of a social worker role out in the field, coupled with the work that's happening with our principals and our SACS and our student support coordinators, to make sure that we're doing the home visits, that we're grabbing the students, that my outreach workers at RPA are out trying to get kids to come back, that the attendance officers linked with the courts. And I think we do a pretty good job of the linkage with the juvenile court. Judge Benelli is very impressed with our efforts in that regard, to continually focus on the little things that we can do. Now, the initiatives with our task force have been, I think, have been great in, you know, the awareness. But it's the due diligence every day of rubber hitting the road. And that's what boots on the ground in this regard means for us. And that's why we were recommending the additional position. So we've gone out and we've interviewed, we found two really high-quality candidates, one of which we'd already appointed, the second of which we'd be here tonight to ask the committee to appoint. But both come from backgrounds that have worked either in alternative ed or in state DCF environments and, or, DCF, I believe. But I don't think that not taking action on the position is going to help us improve. Now, today's, we celebrated Student Attendance Awareness Month. We're trying as hard as we can to get those numbers of daily attendance up. But it's the connection between our, which, and I got to say, historically, this entity in the school system did not have the organization that they currently have. So these roles that used to be seen as something outside of the system have been much more intertwined with the overall work we're doing with our SACS, our whole SEL initiative, and all coming under Assistant Superintendent Anne Doggan's leadership to help coordinate. I'm very happy with the efforts to show that we've improved our chronic absenteeism in most, not all, but in most of our schools this past year. And that, my opinion on this is, let's keep, you know, will more capacity actually help us do even better. And for me, that capacity is the boots on the ground. So I can give more information around strategy. I know you have the report on the attendance policy and all the changes that we've made, both at the high school level and the elementary school level. And we can continue to give the members of the committee the information that they asked for around, you know, what is it that we're doing. But I would encourage the committee to approve the appointment tonight.
So I would just want to comment on, one of the things that I think aggravated me a little bit about the notice that we got about trying to hire this position. The last sentence reads, "Should you hire another attendance officer for the 1920 school year, we can effectively collect data and share with you on a regular basis that the attendance officers indeed can make a difference." That bothers me when I see that because along with that, a month ago, I was asking for data and information and all that. To hear that kind of comment in the last sentence of a thing, quite frankly, aggravated me, that we're going to say, well, if you approve, what if we didn't approve this? We don't get data? I know that's not what it's saying, but that's how I'm taking it. So we need to get that information.
You're probably taking it wrong then, Mr. Agia, because I share data all the time. I mean, every day, I tweet out what attendance data is. So if you're following us on Twitter, you're going to see that. So, I mean, you're getting a ton of information on this. And I'll continue to give the committee information on Fridays on the things that they want.
So I think we need to get more information. But along the same lines, this document that we just got last time, the district, we just approved this, the handbook for schools? In reviewing this for the meeting, it says, one of the things is, "Without a warrant, school attendance officers may apprehend truants found wandering and return them to school." Is that possible? It's in our policy manual here for the state laws regarding attendance. Is that policy?
It is, yes. That's why these positions are appointed by the school committee.
So an attendance officer is going to go pick up a student, put him in their own vehicle, and bring him to school?
Could. Could.
Are we doing that?
Some are, and I want to do more of it. And I also got to get more vehicles because we can't put them in private vehicles. That's one of the real issues here. Because the liability on a private POV is, we can't have that. So it's a question of what do we have vehicles for these employees? And, you know, we have limited assets. But we're trying to do our best with the vans that we have and the other vehicles. But we're also looking to request to purchase some more that we can do a better job with that.
That's, you're not going to get an argument from me. I think part of my point in discussing this is, we're going to create a seventy thousand dollar position. And just as we voted on the last thing about the solar, to do a cost-benefit analysis of the two solar projects, what I'm looking at is, is the seventy thousand dollars we're spending, the best way we can spend seventy thousand dollars? Or is it more effective to hire either several people, buy a couple of vehicles so that these people can actually get the students out? Because without going to the home, we can call, you can do all this stuff. It's not going to, we need to do something different.
We are going to the home. It's just a question of can we physically place a student in the car and take them to school in a POV? And the answer there is no.
Right. So it's not happening.
But I just told you that we try to use the limited assets we have, but not everyone has one.
I think the point is well-taken, that we all agree that we're going to need to do more and something different. My only point is, that's not happening. If you want to say it's happening, anybody else wants to come up to the microphone and say that it's happening, the attendance officers were here, but they left, they'll tell you that it's not happening. They're not being able to get the students, student, they call a student and his mother says, "They overslept, they missed the bus," whatever. How do we go to get that student to get them into school? We don't because right now, we don't have the vehicles. We don't have the process in place. Those are the type of things that I'm thinking is something different, rather than let's just hire another seventy thousand dollar position and hope for the best. I think there might be better ways to spend it. We're fortunate right now that we have some money to spend. So I think it sounds like you're doing maybe some vans, maybe some other transportation modes. I think those things are very important. But the last thing that I want to talk about is the process of what the schools do with, who makes the phone calls, how do we get information? Are all the schools doing the same thing related to that? And you might not have that information today, but if we...
What I'll do for the committee is I'll give them a memo on the process. But this is such granular, this is on my side of the fence, not on the government's side. You're asking a question, I'll get an answer for you. But the process, the SOP that we follow in regards to what the state is, it's on, it's on my side of the fence, but I'll get you a memo so you understand exactly how we go from A to B to C. And you can comment on that once I get it to you.
Got it. The only thing, my last comment is, this district handbook for our students, this here, this committee voted on it, last meeting. So this actual whole document, anything in here, is on our side of the fence as well. So I'll push back on you to say whether it's not, it can't be just one way.
But you asked for process. And I told you I'd answer your question.
Yep.
But you're commenting on it, just commenting on it.
I get it. But the point is, we need a plan. And the bottom line is, is I don't want to play games about whose side of the fence it's on. The bottom line is, is our attendance is not good. We need to do something about it. And we can't just keep doing more of the same. That's my point. I want to vote for this position, but I think I gave my opinion last meeting, and I gave it again now, that we need to do something different, and we need to step up the information. With that, Aye-o.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion that's before is the selection of the two individuals. I'm certainly going to support it. I think anytime we as a committee can put more boots on the ground to try to tackle a problem, obviously, we know exists here in the district. We talk about attendance every year. We've gone to the extent of putting an empty chair in businesses and around prominent places around the community to make sure that we don't forget that attendance is an issue. Superintendent tweets out daily attendance rates for all of our schools. We heard the task force today talk about some of the initiatives that they're going to put forward to assist in getting students to school. The High Five Initiative. We cannot teach students if they're not in school. And so, adding additional resources, that have the statutory authority to hold parents accountable for getting their children to school, is a no-brainer for me, from where I sit. And so, I'm certainly going to support it. And if it was a request tonight for two additional on top of that, I'd support it. We need to get serious about attendance, and I agree. It can't just be hire more people. But I think with the resources of having those individuals in the place, in place, will allow the superintendent the discretion on how to deploy those individuals through his staff. And so, I'm going to support it with regards to whether or not the law, the statute, allows for apprehension of children without a warrant. I don't know where we need to go that far, but if that becomes an issue for the district to proceed with, there's a proposal tonight for two additional vans. So, I'm not so sure that I'd want to delve into that pond just yet, but there is a proposal for more vehicles. So, that would be an option if that becomes a decision the district wants to make. But regardless of that, attendance is an issue. One of the ways to streamline making an impact in that, I think, is having more resources, people available to make that work happen. Years ago, if I'm not mistaken, we used to have attendance officers at each grade level at high school. We have two at the high school now. And so, I, I think at one point, I think our total number of attendance officers may have been eight. I think we have six now. So, this may bring us back to the compliment that we had years ago. But in any event, I'm asking the committee to support it. I think it's an important move. It's an important position, and certainly I'm asking for a favorable vote. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins? Mayor Cora?
Yes. Item number eight, discussion of votes to approve expenditure of a $1 million employer trust fund appropriation. So, motion has been made. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second with a question?
Second with a question, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. I just, I guess for the administration, this is an awful lot of money. It's $1 million. You know, I know that, I had brief conversations with the superintendent about bringing this before the finance subcommittee so we could have discussions on each item. And I'm just wondering why there's a move to have it before the committee for approval this evening?
Oversight.
I'm sorry?
We'll go to the finance committee with it. It was an oversight. If that's what the committee...
So, are you asking for approval of the expenditure tonight or...
No, no. If you, if you're suggesting that we go to the finance subcommittee for discussion, I'd rather do that.
I'll let the committee decide that this evening. I don't want to hold up the expenditure. I'm just saying that there's a number of items on here that I think members would have questions about, you know, the need for and why we're expending the money. It's, it's a lot of money. I think, you know, should be put to good use. I'm not saying the items before is...
Are you recommending it, just refer it to the finance committee? I think that's a fair recommendation.
I mean, I'm, I'm in support of that request, so I mean...
Yeah, I think we have a finance subcommittee scheduled for a week from now, or two weeks from now.
Are you making that the form of a motion, Vice Chair?
I'll, I'll, at this point, Mr. Chairman, just for a minute to give opportunity to others, I seconded it for the purposes of discussion. I'll let the discussion play out. If need be, if the committee feels it should be vetted more thoroughly through finance subcommittee, we'll do it. If not, then I have no problem taking action or at least voting tonight on it. But I just wanted to make that, there's a lot of money being spent here. I want to make sure that the committee has an opportunity to ask all the questions necessary. We could do that tonight, but I can tell you, we're going to be here for a while because there's probably about 20 items totaling $1 million. And I think it, it's an issue that deserves a little more discussion than a quick vote tonight on that. But with that, I'll yield. I'll let other members, I'll let my second stand.
Is there a motion to send it to the finance committee? There's no motion for that at this time?
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Okay.
But I also have a question.
Yep, Mr. Coogan.
Piggybacking on what the last discussion was, why can't we use some of this money? I see there's a couple of vans in here. But why can't we get a couple of cars that are accessible for our attendance officers to go pick kids up?
They could use the vans.
I, I mean, but don't they need a special license for that?
It's, 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 don't you, isn't it just a 7D?
7D.
Do they all have that?
No, but we can get it for them. We can put more kids in the vans, is what I'm getting at.
Well, I understand, I, I understand.
We can get a couple minivans if you suggest that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like a, like one of those ones that a family of 10 has.
I want to be very clear with the committee. I, I put this on here for discussion tonight, not to get a vote. And I know time is always of the essence, and we spent a lot of time talking about some other stuff. But I would much rather, I have a finance committee scheduled next week or the week after. There's no rush on this money. As you can see, there's no personnel. It's all about materials.
Is there a motion to send it to the finance committee?
I just want to finish up, though. I'd like to see if there's a way that we can get a couple of what we can almost call exclusively attendance vans, to go running around the city, accessible to all of our attendance officers, so that if they need one at Durfia, they need one at Viveras, we can get the runs going at a regular rate. I think that would help our attendance.
Yeah, like a minivan.
Let them, have their little crew have their own accessible stuff.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Okay, is there a motion to refer this to the finance subcommittee?
I'm so moved.
Motion's been made and seconded with a question, Mr. Corey.
Yes, just one more question. Mr. Superintendent, do, do the vehicles have to be brand-new? Or can we get some really high-quality used ones?
We can, well, we can do both. And we can look at both options, of course. And with the minivan option, not the regular van option. There's a car savings. And then, it's just a regular license to use them.
Maybe we can, instead of two Curio vans, maybe we can get four, maybe we can get six.
We have enough money, we may be able to get 10, but you get what I'm saying. It's, it's, I'm, I'm in agreement that we need a separate painted...
We do.
Something and make that a really big PR policy thing for us as we, as we move forward.
Absolutely.
I think we're all on the same page. Mr. Agia said it, everyone said it. We got to do something different about attendance. We got to keep dumping. And that's why we put the vans on there.
So, I mean, I'm just seeing what we can do to even multiply because it's a good idea. It's, I've worked with the attendance, so I've done home visits. We need it. That, that brings the kids back into school. So, that's what we need. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Mr. Agia.
Quick question on the, the new PACE Center?
Yes.
The top, whatever, six or seven of those? Is that already the work that's being done?
No. So, there's two, there's two components. There's the work that, that came with the MSBA project, and then, there's the work that we have to do separately because it's not part of the MSBA project.
And so, is this time-sensitive, when they're moving out to one, to move into another?
Ken, is the PACE one's time-sensitive? So, so those...
Make an amendment that we take the PACE...
Those top, top ones out.
They want to say new PACE Center and approve those today and table the rest.
Okay, make that the form of a motion.
That would help us.
Okay, motions were made and seconded. Roll call.
On the motion to refer, or the motion to approve, or the motion for all of it? Because there's three motions on the floor right now.
So, we're going to do the motion to amend. And we're going to motion to amend the document to conclude approval of the two that are necessary for PACE, and the rest will be sent to the finance committee.
Okay.
That's the new motion.
It's, it's the first seven items.
Again, I just lost, there was a few motions there. I wanted to make sure I got the right one.
Which one are we voting on right now?
We're voting on the first seven. Those will be approved, and the remaining will go to the finance subcommittee.
Okay.
Okay, motions were made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins? Mayor Cora?
Yes. Thank you.
On a motion to refer?
A motion to refer...
Subcommittee, finance?
Made and seconded?
It was seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins? Mayor Cora?
Yes. Okay, we have a number of items that are FYIs. Is there a motion to place on file?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Is there a second of the FYIs? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? FYIs? Question on the FYIs?
Oh, no, I have another question.
Okay, all right. Just a line FYIs, give me a sec. Okay. And then, any new business this evening, Mr. Agia?
Just a quick question on the, I believe that on the agenda, we're supposed to have a monthly finance report each month. I don't know if that was just an oversight or, I'm not sure what, but I'd like to have that on the agenda each month. And the reason being is not necessarily to have it to the T. We just started the school year.
The only reason we don't do it is because September, the first payroll doesn't run until September 6th for the, well, in this case, this year. So, normally, we provide a monthly report in, for September and October. So, we typically don't provide one this month.
Yeah, what I mean by that is just to have a line item to say, if we had any questions for you based on the finances. So, on the new business, I will just ask again for, I know we got some information on the Title I, but in the subsequent month, what's going on with the Title I? We thought we had a cut, then we had an increase. So, details, just, that's still on my radar of what are we doing with that? So, with that, I yield.
Thank you. No new business? Okay. We do have a number of reasons to go into executive session for this evening. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion hasn't been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. And Bruce, you want to read the, the reasons for executive session?
Sure.